April meeting. This is the April meeting of the Planning Commission. I am joined by Ms. Rice, Mr. Miller, Burzak, and Mr. Everett. I'm Pat Hartzell, Chair. Call the meeting to order. Thank you. All right, first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the March 6, 2025 meeting. A minutes draft form were sent to you. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Ms. Burzak. All right, let's go. Yes.
All right, so on packet page three. Fourth paragraph down, it says, Ms. Burzak, that question of parking apartment below family unit should be increased to less than 1.5. And then there was more to that. And then I said, based on reviewing the parking count chart, 1.25 seemed closer to what is needed. And then the sentence below that, Mr. Everett agreed with Ms. Burzak's statement and then commented that he could.
Okay, I get we sort of go back. Where are you? Where are you pointing at Mr. Everett's statement?
Right under mine. So it said that he.
Where does it say agrees with Ms. Burzak?
It doesn't, but that's what was what he said in the.
Oh, yeah, but how is that relevant? As long as what he said was was correct.
If you read what it says, it says that he recommended the 1.25. He agreed with my assessment that 1.25 was closer to what the actual counts.
Okay, that's more to Mr. Everett's version. So we'll hear from him on that. But what about on yours?
Okay, so just what I.
But your statement was correct.
No, it isn't. It just said that I questioned less than 1.5. And then I want to add to that. Based on reviewing the parking count chart, 1.25 seems closer to what is needed.
Can that is that on the record? Can we have that checked? That probably needs because that's a subsequent addition. I'm not saying it is or isn't. I don't remember it. We should have to check the the record. If it's there, I don't have any problem.
So, Mr. Everett, do you want to?
Yeah, I I think I did concur with Kathy's assessment that 1.25, that it could be reduced to 1.25.
All right. So how are you recommending that it be changed? With the addition of a statement at the end of that paragraph?
Or I could just say Mr. Everett agreed with. If if Kathy's statement gets changed to what she's suggesting, then I can.
Well, if you remember saying you agreed with Ms. Everett with Ms. Burzak, then she said something to that effect. If you actually remember that, somebody remember, I just have no actual recall of it without checking a record. So can we add both of those, please, Kristen?
Yes.
Anybody have any objection? All right, other additions or corrections? All right, and we have a motion then with regard to the minutes. We have a motion to adopt the minutes as corrected?
So moved.
All right, thank you, Mr. Everett, of support, Ms. Rice. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Minutes are adopted as corrected. Next item on the agenda. Applicant for 2629 Cleveland Avenue, Yoga Life Infinity Wellness LLC sign modification. We have somebody here to speak to the motion. If you need you to join us up here at the podium, tell us who you are and what you are requesting from us today. I should say your application was provided to us at least a few days early. So we have been able to review that and do have the materials in your application. So with that, tell us who you are and what you're asking from us today.
I'm Dr. Jerome, and the owner of Yoga Life and Infinity Wellness. And I'm just proposing this wall sign on the second story of the building.
Oh, there we go. And it's going to be placed or requesting for it to be placed above the bottom of a second story window.
So you're requesting a modification from the ordinance?
Yes.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, had a chance to review the application. Anyone have any questions directly for our applicant? Ms. Burzak.
So it mentions that Yoga Life is on the second floor of the building.
Yes.
What's on the first floor of the building? And the only signage I saw on site was all Yoga Life.
Yeah, so we're actually expanding to the building being named Infinity Wellness now. So we're refacing the existing pole sign to be Infinity Wellness. And then we'll have multiple tenants in the building and Yoga Life will operate out of the second story.
So the Infinity Wellness, the sign that the large sign that's in the front.
Ground sign.
The.
The pole sign.
That's going to be changed to Infinity Wellness. And then this will be a unit within.
Yes.
That building.
Yes.
Okay.
A tenant.
Other tenants within the Infinity Wellness.
Yep, so each tenant has its own entrance. And then once we can work to get the Infinity Wellness signage up, then we'll work to see what signage they can do.
Okay, so the other tenants might have a need for additional signage.
Yep, and they wouldn't have, it would be like wall signage outside of their entrance, just a small one.
Outside of their.
Yeah.
Kristen, have you gone over this with the applicant about our new sign ordinance and how that would work with multiple tenants in the manner which you've described?
Yeah, well, she's aware what's allowed for the each of your tenants. How does allow if you have a separate door, they get their own signage.
And the ground sign, we've covered that as well.
The the existing pole sign, she understood, we've talked about that sign is non-conforming. The circuit court were district were located in Alaska, base changes. They understand that they'll have to come in a compliance before. And that's that's the.
All right, thank you. Other questions for our applicant? Thank you. Let us let us.
Okay, thank you.
Chat a bit. We may have more, but we'll call you back if we do. All right, ladies and gentlemen. Questions, comments?
Yeah, I don't think I have any objection. I think it's pretty minimal.
Ms. Burzak.
I agree. I think that the sign size is you know, very appropriate for what the request is. And I don't have any issue with additional height being above the 20 feet if it makes sense in relation to you know, the facade of the building to meet the heights it showed.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
I I agree with Ms. Burzak. I also like that it's a it's a backlit aluminum channel letter. So it's it's not very intrusive. It serves its purpose without being overly intrusive.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. I agree. That lays pretty well for this particular parcel in this particular location, I think, actually. Anything else? Any other questions for our applicant? Was no public hearing required on this? So there would be no notice, but Kristen, I don't know how they would know, but any any input from any neighbors, anybody in the surrounding area that the city's received since our packets went out? There's no further questions or no further discussion. Yes, Ms. Burzak.
I was gonna say I'll make a motion.
Okay, we're looking for a motion, please.
Okay, I moved. Well, we moved to approve a request by Yoga Life Infinity Wellness LLC located at 2629 Cleveland Avenue for sign modification from section 25-13 table 25-1 wall signs in the C Commercial Business District to allow a wall sign above the bottom of any second floor window and to increase the overall height from 20 feet to 26 feet. As allowed under section 25-33 parentheses 2B, 1C, and D, based on the drawing prepared by RFX, included in the April 9, 2025 planning commission packet as the request meet the factors as found in section 25-33 1V and 25-33 2C of the sign ordinance as stated in the document.
All right, thank you, Ms. Burzak. I have a motion. Do I have support for her motion?
Support.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. A reminder, ask the modification requested is for a wall sign above the bottom of any second floor window and to increase the overall height from 20 to 26 feet. That's the request and modification required on the ordinance. There's no further discussion. Clerk may call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Eager.
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, the next item on the agenda is an equity application regarding the parcel at 2712 Niles Avenue, Signart Inc. For sign honor credit union. Is there someone here to speak to this proposal? Can you join us at the podium and tell us who you are, what you're requesting? And again, as in the prior application, we did have your application and some drawings in advance of today's hearing and a chance to review those. So.
Sure. My name is Steve, and I'm with Signart. You may recall that I was here back in 2012 when this branch, this site, the flagship of Honor Credit Union was built. They are in the process of rebranding all of their locations, and they're really looking to be doing so with this site. And we are approached this very much a like-for-like situation. One thing I would like to add to the staff report, if I may. The wall sign that faces the residential property across the street. The existing is roughly 78 square feet. And we are proposing a pretty nice sizable in area reduction to 46. So I appreciate the board would keep that in mind. And the electronic message board, the actual LED area, not the cabinet itself, but the part that illuminates is only 16 square feet. So it's roughly 35% of the total sign area that we are proposing at this time. I don't think you'll find any surprises with what we proposed. You may have noticed some of the other locations with the new brand. Time here to answer any of those questions that maybe you don't feel that the application was.
All right, thank you. Questions for our applicant, Mr. Everett?
There's an existing wall sign on the north face of the building that faces birthright. Is that coming off?
That is coming off and being replaced with a newer version of that, also a a reduction in, but similar in version.
Excellent, thank you.
Other questions for our applicant?
Is the electronic message board, is that both sides?
It is both sides.
And the above that? The the sign above that? Correct, is? I'm looking at the nighttime view. Is the is everything but the letters opaque?
Background is is opaque indeed. The letters are the only portion that illuminates. It's a pretty soft illumination method. And it certainly will will not be glaring by. So yes, the actual percentage of illuminated area vary minimal, probably less than half of the total sign area.
But even though being a white background, it's still opaque. Thank you.
Will not have a white polycarbonate lens set.
Other questions for our applicant?
So the bottom, the last two foot, one and a half inch, what is that material?
That is aluminum. It's consistent with what is currently present. It is a dark gray.
Okay.
So it's meant to not be highlighted.
Okay, so the the sign on the tablet page, more than 3D left B on the left, existing elevation. I was trying to figure out what the existing elevation is with comparison to the new elevation overall. So basically, is the height staying the same if you were to you know, transfer this from one photo to the other with the height be staying the same? But the honor portion that was burgundy and white previously is getting smaller, and then you're adding an LED below it? Or is it growing in height?
I think you're combining signs.
Uh, no, I'm asking if the sign.
No, she's not.
Is existing.
The monument sign?
The monument sign on the street side on on Niles Avenue, if that's street sign, the current one that's there today. If I look from the existing picture over to the proposed elevation, what I'm trying to determine, and I couldn't tell, is has the sign grown in?
Is the is the new sign taller?
Is the new sign taller than what is there currently? Or are you taking some of basically downsizing from the top and making part of it LED and part of it?
I don't have the exact number for you, but I do believe it did grow a few inches in height.
Yeah, I'm trying to find out how much in height, like that would be really beneficial because.
What I can tell you is that it it is under eight feet, which is the maximum height for that building. And it proposed at seven foot, nine and a half inches tall.
So if you recall back in 2012, there were many of us that technically bought it a few times because of, you know, wanting it kind of locked down a little bit. And so I'm personally not in favor of it growing any higher than it already currently is because there's a lot of signage already on this building. And you know, that I don't feel like it needs to get any larger to convey the same intent. And then I do have a question that I would like to ask at the same time related to this for staff related to LED. The LED portion says, join the fun and something about switch and get blah, blah, blah. So that in my mind is an advertisement. Are LED signs allowed to advertise? Or because I didn't recall that they were.
No, they are for on-premise services, services that are offered through the.
Well, I'll teach you how.
But they would not be allowed to sell Coca-Cola.
Okay, so it like, okay, so if all of a sudden someone asks you to put a sign up for something that would be inappropriate for your own personal.
Any other function.
Any other function.
And I I do have people here with Honor Credit Union that can address that. I don't think they're in the advertising or in advertising business or in the desire of offering.
You'd be amazed what creep what creeps into an LED sign once granted, because we're going to have a conversation about steep the flood place in a minute. So go ahead.
So that was basically my questions. But I will say that if if you could provide the heights of the existing sign, I am not in favor of the sign growing anyway whatsoever beyond what's already out there because it's I wouldn't look at it. It's pretty. It's pretty sizable already.
And for those that weren't here, there was a consensus, majority if not unanimous, but there was certainly a majority specifically directed this size of the sign. You proposed the original sign in the where the existing elevation picture, that original sign was proposed as much larger. And that was not going to fly. It became, I'm now shorthand, it was not going to fly at that time. You went back, came back with a size that we could approve and felt that was appropriate for that building and that location. And so that was very was very strategic. It wasn't willy-nilly. It was very strategic and a lot of discussion about sizing down to be appropriate in that particular spot.
I'll tell you why. I would I would, and I'm sure that my colleagues here would agree that as a condition of approval, that the height not increased. I'm fine with that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Other questions or comments, questions for our applicant regarding the application? All right, thank you, sir. Let us talk. If we have questions, we'll come, we'll come back. I'm assuming again, this is not a public hearing required for a sign request of this nature. However, we're good. We had any input, first of all, any input from anybody regarding this proposal? Okay, all right. Ladies and gentlemen, let's talk. Anybody have any questions or comments or discussion points?
Just I'll start with this discussion points. My I reached out to Ms. Gunderson before the meeting regarding the size of the existing sign, at least the area square footage. And it looks like the proposed sign is slightly less square footage. I very I put a lot of consideration into all of our message boards. And where they go. Overall, for myself, I'm not a huge supporter of message boards, but I do feel that they should have a place in our community. I think Niles Avenue is one of the more appropriate places to have an electronic message board. The hesitations that I have with this location in particular is that there are residential properties directly across the street. There's three or four houses directly across the street. So I'll take that into consideration regarding the electronic message board. I think the the upper part of the this monument sign is certainly less intrusive than I think the existing sign. And that the new proposed wall sign, channel letter sign is overall smaller, measurably smaller. The existing sign was told was 79 square feet. The new proposed wall sign is 46 square feet. So I'll be taking all of those items into consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Anybody else? Well, you hit you hit me on kind of a bad day. So I'm I'm listening hard, Ms. Miller, because ordinarily, I tend to like these more than some of my colleagues, who some of our colleagues don't like these at all. But I drove by, I've been going by at different times. We really do prepare for these meetings. So I've been going by at different times and days, and that's in my neighborhood. And boy, I made the mistake of driving by on Saturday. And the flood sign was signature Toyota on steroids. And I think, Kristen, Mr. Miller was here at the time, I thought we had some restrictions which we are allowed to put on signs of that nature in terms of how fast the images can change and speed. And I am telling you, I think somebody at the city needs to take a look at what's going on at Flood. Because that, I cannot believe, maybe it was, I don't want to, I don't want to say for sure. But that was literally going off in such a fashion that it is what we always tell our applicants on these. The one thing we do not ever want, we hopefully didn't want, was things like signature Toyota going straight down any of the streets here. And that's the way it came off to me with some of the display I saw on Saturday morning. Bad day to be here with an LED request. Having said that, I'm not sure why you need it. What the purpose of this is, but I do agree with some of Mr. Miller's points. It is a bit of a start because I was counting. I don't count the gas signs because those those have been required to have changeable message boards for decades before they got trendy for churches and everybody else in schools. You have Flood, and you've got Parable. And there's nothing in between. There have been opportunities, I was mentioning, Mr. Miller earlier, reflections. Multi-tenant establishments that might have seen the need for for this, whether the banking industry has a need for that beyond time and temp. I mean, I'm not sure, but again, they do, it is, it's clearly a commercial strip. I there are residences across the street. That's the downside of this not being a published public hearing. Because those folks in those houses don't have any, unless they check the agenda, they don't know we're talking about. So I balance all of that. But then again, it's published on the agenda and your applicant, that's all public record too. So I'm kind of mulling over this and listening to my to my colleagues. And as I say, I'm allowing for the fact that after I drove by on Saturday, I was inclined, I walked in kind of inclined to say no, because if it's going to turn into what is happening there at Flood's place. Dr. Flood's place, I know. That was sort of not, well, any of us, and we have been, we're not picking, we have been very careful about, we have put restrictions on these in terms of how quickly the images can change, the kind of images you can have, the colors you can, we have literally gotten into that detail. But you know, people have to do business and they are allowed. So I'm I'm balancing. Ms. Stafford, we haven't heard from you.
Yeah, if there's an issue with Flood's sign, that's an enforcement issue. I mean, we have the ordinance in place for a reason, and if it's not being followed, then that's an enforcement issue.
And I.
I see no reason to use that as a basis to judge this. I agree that this strip of South Niles Avenue is the appropriate location for these kinds of signs. And I certainly can see the value for various services that the credit union might offer that need to be advertised to get people through the front door. So I can support the proposal.
Again, I don't want to imply that they are violating. We may have allowed that and and it was applying. But I think that's worth a look see from the city. I'm not trying to prejudge that Dr. Flood's office is in violation of what they were granted, but.
And that sign permit for Dr. Flood's, that sign's been there many, many years before this sign order was adopted. So.
I know, but we still put, I think we put some restrictions on that.
I'll have to go back and look to see what work was added to that request. I don't know.
I don't, I don't know. We have done, we did it before the new ordinance. I know that. We had applications related to that. We did put color and and intensity of light and timing with the hours. Messaging, we had done that before our new ordinance, which is relatively recent. So I I'm not saying we did in that one. But that might be worth a look see.
Yeah, I can look into that. And then the applicant did sign packet page 32, the rules and regulations on that are found in the sign order, but how this electronic support is allowed. So they understand all the rules and regulations. And how much that they will be following. And it's very common for us. We have lots of different signs in lots of different areas that have different rules. You know, we've been called to, we need to reduce it by two seconds. We need to, you know, it's very normal for us to have to adjust based on the rules of that area. So.
Yeah, Ms. Burzak.
So I'm going to go on the record saying that I will vote in favor of it. It's part of it, it's also included keeping it the same height it already is. Just because I already feel like it's a substantial height and adding, I don't, I understand this might be a little less, but height for me is always a new. And I don't feel that it's warranted to go any higher than it already is. So that will be, you know, depending on how the motion is addressed, whether or not I vote in favor. And then I will also say that I am one that I don't really like, you know, these message boards. But, you know, I understand why people want them. And so looking at it from a standpoint, I run with my dogs in the dark, and there's a stretch that I go down. Well, it's totally residential. And every day when I'm turning and running northbound toward my home, I am looking at a bright flashing LED sign that is a half a mile away that I can read for a half mile. Because it is on 24/7 flashing for everyone to see. And so one thing I think, we have good neighbors, like there are still residential homes on that street. Consideration toward, you know, the clientele that you're looking to grasp, you know, really between the hours of nine and 8:00 AM, don't really need to be seeing bright lit flashing signs. So I always ask to be considerate of that. And if there's any way that I'm sure, you know, with the capabilities these all have nowadays, that they could be set where there's a dimmer. So during those hours, you know, it could be toned down a little bit so that it's not so intrusive to people that live across the street that might have a bedroom window facing that street if they're unfortunate enough to have that, you know. So so that would be my advice. If that's a possibility. But I understand when, you know, no one wants to go out there and end the lettering in the old days. So.
I can speak to that. So the existing sign height is seven foot five.
Seven foot five.
If you want to include that in your motion, that.
Seven foot five inches.
Correct.
Max. Okay.
Yep. As it goes to electronic displays, so as part of my job is to inform them of what these limitations are. That's something that happens very early on. The other thing I do that they don't even know that, but I I've run the display initially at our shop. And at that time, I dim it down to what I consider effective levels, being not too bright, not too dim. And it ends up where they're only running it at about 50% capacity during the day. Which is when the sign is at its brightest. And at night, it's at about 5%.
Okay.
So anything brighter than that, it's the point of attempting to be obnoxious rather than deliver a message, which is what you're commenting to. And I can tell you right now that Honor is not interested in being the obnoxious resident out of the commercial district. It's not how they do business. They're very tasteful in how they approach all of their marketing. I could give some personal experience. I could give some personal experience there. They have a, they have seventeen, currently have seventeen boards. So they are, what I would say, probably the closest thing to an expert at understanding the ins and outs of the use of digital. Your onesie-twosie people, probably not.
So just keeping with what you just said, since, you know, this didn't require a public hearing, if there were complaints from neighbors across the street, would you be able during the evening hours to put a further dimming?
Yeah, yeah. If you will mind that, polycarbonate sign face, like we spoke to, it's far more glaring and overly bright than a digital sign dimmed down to the appropriate. Another thing to keep in mind is thankfully for them, the display is perpendicular to their, to the homes.
Yeah.
And LEDs are very much have a lens, so they they don't floodlight, they don't disperse the light one hundred eighty degrees. It's actually pretty, pretty narrow. So once you get outside a ninety-degree window, the brightness actually decreases even more. So it's it's not going to have that same in your living room effect that you might think. Very considerate of that. And a board of this size, probably, if it's at a floodlight of a neighbor's garage, it'd probably be more offensive than this.
Well, thank you for that.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Do you have questions or comments?
I'm just going to have a clarification. If if a proposed sign was to have a height limit, would that be achieved by making just a shorter pedestal? Thank you.
Hearing no further discussion, we have a motion, ladies and gentlemen.
I'll move to approve the request by Sign Art Incorporated on behalf of the property owner on credit union property located at twenty-seven twelve Niles Avenue for the follow. One, special approval of a sign greater than thirty-two square feet for one internally illuminated wall sign facing Niles Avenue. Two, special sign request for a sign greater than thirty-two square feet for one internally illuminated ground sign, and three, special approval for an electronic message board on the ground sign being less than fifty percent of the total area of the ground sign at twenty square feet in the C Commercial Business District, based on the drawings prepared by Sign Art Incorporated and included in the April tenth, twenty twenty-five planning commission packet as the request meets the factors found in section twenty-five dash thirty-three one B of the sign ordinance as stated in the findings, with the condition that the new sign be no taller than the existing sign.
All right, thank you, Mr. Everly. We have a motion. Do I have support for his motion?
Of course.
Thank you, Ms. Burzak. We have support. Is there further discussion in the motion? Hearing none, the clerk may call the roll.
Mr. Eber.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Sign Art corporate for that.
Yes.
All right, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, next item on the agenda, we have all business parking. Got a lot of the updated information that we had given over the past meetings have been now incorporated into our materials. Truthfully, with reduced ranks, I'm not real comfortable going too much in depth or too out there in terms of new areas without everybody's input, but seems this is largely incorporating what we had given direction on before, correct? Kristen, I think that's a fair assessment.
Right.
Okay, but there's always, as upon review, people may have found other things that's huffed out, came to light. Gentlemen to my right tends to be very good at that on occasion, or things that we missed and didn't see. And now looking at it in somewhat more final form, we see something. Issues, thoughts, comments? Is it ready to put into final form and schedule?
I have some.
Yes, Ms. Burzak.
So package page thirty-nine, I'll just go through all the questions I have and.
I'm sorry, you said thirty-nine?
Package thirty-nine. So one question I had, where did the item D, section eighteen dash two, point two, point zero parking requirements, the seating capacity, did the seating change from eighteen to twenty-four inches per user?
The existing ordinance goes back and forth between eighteen inches and twenty-four.
Okay.
So I went with the bigger number.
Okay, because I wondered if that was a building retain, building code change related. It's actually because there was inconsistency.
Yeah, inconsistency, so I went with the bigger number and made everyone be the same at twenty-four.
Okay, thank you for that. And then I'll just let your mind go fast, and then package page forty-one. So the first one, auditorium, other than incidental schools and religious institutions. So it used to be one space for every six persons, and now it actually increased to one space for every four persons. I was kind of surprised that that actually wasn't an increase in parking requirements versus a deduction. So I'm asking, do we have documentation supporting why that was necessary?
Again, it was to be consistent, because if you go back to package page forty, the other auditoriums, there was one space for every four seats, just to be consistent. And going forward through it, you know, where we have in the. So I'm looking for the other one that's similar.
Yeah, the only comment I would have is a church is different than an auditorium that on a, like, for instance, a jambalaya, you know, you usually are lucky if you get eighteen inches per person. You're kind of crammed in. And so a church is a little bit different in that regard, and so I just wondered why the increase, because I think from everything that we've discussed, our overall goal is not to put in unnecessary parking to convert that to open space or some other appropriate use instead of a paved surface that's not necessary. So I guess that one, I just question going up in size, if churches used to be one per six, it seems like we wouldn't want to increase that.
Well, churches were one for every four.
So what used to be six?
Auditoriums, other than incidental schools or other similar buildings. Now, if you keep going further back in the recreation areas, I also maintain the four spaces. For, there were a lot of different options, which got into indoor entertainment. For a soccer field, it was one for every three seats of spectators. Theaters was one space for every three seats.
So I guess what my thought is, if we assume that twenty-four inches covers one seat regardless, then I think if you want to be consistent, then the numbers should all reflect that as being the basis of one person sitting. You know, versus some being, so if you go one, one for every three seats, three times two is six, so that, you know, that's six versus the eight again.
And then the stadiums and sports arenas were, was originally and still is, one space for every four seats. And then said word six, we go, thanks.
Do we have any examples of what all we just described?
Really?
I'm just trying to think of something.
No, no, churches, so it's hard to pull what, what, what do we?
Do we have any auditorium type, I'm thinking of auditorium type not related to a school?
The closest one would probably be the space in area A to the C that's like in their second building to the south, the old on credit union building. There's an area there that can help out for seating, because they can accommodate groups.
Does that apply to any of the large meeting rooms, like in the library downstairs or Heritage Center?
I mean, I could go back and look some more and have that for next one. I know I could look at what the old, see, even like the Church of God, there was no park. There's a good chart for that of what occupancy was for each of the different.
To that. So First Church of God, let's just use that as an example, the amount of parking they have. That parking originally was based on square footage.
It's it's based on your bigger, biggest sanctuary area. And with the addition going on, that becomes their bigger area, and I have to go, their parking flies.
So do you know now, though, based on what we're posing today for the church side of it, is there a way to easily determine if and and they would be able to tell you, do they have adequate parking for the size?
I mean, I can go, I can get the, because that has an active building permit.
Because that would be a good one, just to check, because to me, it's kind of like, I was surprised some of these went up if the goal is to make sure that we're not putting in more parking.
The church remained the same. We didn't change the churches.
So it's it's not related, not in, other than those incidental schools.
So those went up, but I'm just saying some still went up in size that from what they previously were. And if the goal is to try to make sure that we're not over.
Yeah, I was just trying to think of any, an example of one of these, and then how how that's kind of applied to us over the years, and whether it was too much or not enough.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to do. If there was one that we could go back to and be fairly certain that, okay, so we need it.
What about the theater when the Urology Building was a theater? South Town, that was a, that was a movie theater.
I'd have to see what the rule, I'd have to go look, research through that property file, I don't.
And that might be hard too, because there were other uses that might have.
Or the other option would be just go, since there was one category at one time, there's one space for every six people, just switch everything to that instead of one for every four, go.
I see the benefit of of having it consistent.
Yes.
That part I I get, and was part of the goal, just trying to pick between what, whether it should be four or should be six. It's trying to get a handle on what what's beneficial, I mean, what what can, any guess to know what St. Joe High School is, parking for that auditorium, or Lakeshore High School for that auditorium?
I I have no idea. And the schools, you know, a boatload falls under, say. I can look at First Church of God, because I know we that's current and we can find to get the building.
There is a boatload of parking there, but, you know, if there is excessive parking, it would be good to know that, because again, I just think that our whole goal is to try to be more environmentally, you know, and sustainable and all that other good stuff, so. And then, sorry, I lost my. And the only other one, there was one other one that I just wanted to, well, there might be two others. Package page forty-six. The indoor-outdoor entertainment establishment. So amusement center arcade. And then over on the right side, one space for each four persons allowed within the maximum occupied speed load as established by local. So down below that, down below that, it talks about four spaces for each alley. Did you mean lane? Is it like bowling lane? Because alley to me.
It was alley, it's alley today, so if you want lane in there.
But is it talking about a bowling alley? Is that what we're thinking?
That's what is in the code today is alley.
But but do you think the code meant bowling?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Bowling, okay.
That's all they had back then. It was always called a bowling alley.
What's, no, lanes?
That has lanes.
Well, still a bowling alley as far as I'm concerned, I don't think.
I don't know, alley confused me, it just seemed. So, and then the only other thing, under research, package page forty-eight. One space used to be for every employee on the largest ship. So now that's changed to square hundred feet, five hundred square feet. Do you have any idea for?
That's, it complies with the World Bowl building, that was the big addition.
So the World Bowl building, though, was made one space for every employee. That's what that was.
But it's based on the square footage and the number of parking spaces. If it was built to what they told us it was going to be done, that is.
Five hundred, okay, because so much of research is area that is occupied by a bunch of lab and equipment and stuff, so as long as that's consistent, you did check that square footage against their numbers.
Yeah, that one was checked, and then also.
What about Lico?
The Lico one was checked, the one building on the north side of the street, not that big industrial building, but the one that's kind of set back on the west, west.
Yeah, I'm familiar with it, yeah.
Yeah, that one was checked.
Was it in compliance with this?
Yeah, I mean, they would comply based on square footage and the number of parking spaces they save. Okay, I don't know how many workers they have in.
Because I do, I do get why it's really hard to do by a number of employees, because you don't know that, and it fluctuates and stuff. So as long as we're making sure, though, that what we just, you know, what we are going with currently meets that, that square footage amount for research, I'm fine with that then. I just wanted clarification. That's all I had.
All right, thank you, Ms. Burzak. Anybody else? Comments, questions?
Was there ever in multifamily properties, multifamily dwellings?
Package.
Package page forty?
Thank you.
Was there ever discussion to regard square footage of a unit or number of bedrooms?
No, and square footage would probably not be the best, because it's, you know, people use it, that could be very different. You know, you could have a four hundred square foot efficiency unit, comply with his own ordinance, and so square footage, I've never seen used for that kind of use.
Okay.
Bedroom mix I have seen, but you have to know upfront what it is, and things change. Or over time, things change, and that can be difficult. Some places that do use a bedroom, and I've seen some places where they've added, you know, like you need ten percent of whatever the total is, you need like a percentage of visitor part.
I would just comment that, being aware, you know, I work on a lot of projects that require the use of that particular ordinance numbering. It is definitely a lot easier and clearer to be doing it by the unit number. Because if if you had to break it down by other means, it would require on everyone's part, including staff, and whoever's, you know, working on it, a lot more, you know, of a breakdown. So if you know you have ninety-nine units, and it says you need one point two-five per unit, you can quickly determine what your parking pound is. But I do agree with Kristen. I think it's never a bad idea that sometimes I've seen ordinances that want you to have, you know, extra visitor. And any good developer should put that in on that, because they're going to have visitors, people have visitors. So, you know, I don't know that we want to dictate that, but anyone that is doing this and really wanting, you know, to have it successful, will have spaces for other people to come and visit and have a place to park, so.
Other, did I still have those other materials, but I didn't, I didn't think to look. The larger apartment complex at the south end of town on the west side. Did, did we survey that on how a well-utilized their parking is?
It was included in the materials.
Okay, I can, I can look that up. I, you know, just, I think that could be a good example of what's what's working. What's, what's working?
Yeah.
Is it, right, uh, uh, is, do they have a lot of?
They're right, I mean, they are all under two spaces for a unit, I mean, what?
Yeah, I would just be curious to, you know, how many units, how many spaces and then? If we, if we ever surveyed that to go, wow, this is really empty or this is.
So I think that's how last month, we kind of came up with the, looking at the charts and everything. And they did a great job counting those and we, staff was originally recommending one point five, but digging deeper into looking at it. None of those counts ever exceeded the one point two-five, that's why we were like, well, we really need one point five. So that's kind of how we evolved it, um, looking at all those charts that she, that they had prepared, um, you know. That's kind of how it in, involved into where we thought, well, maybe a little lesser is. Okay?
I can, I can look that up too, I still have the, those materials.
They were never, so we did parking counts at different times of the day and week and everything, and that parking lot was never a hundred percent full.
Okay.
When I called to ask questions, cause I talked to each of the management companies, what the lady there said. They do have an arrangement with the bowling alley to. If you have visitors or guests and we need overflow, then we park here. And they do have that and they do rely on that some weekends. Um, and they also had a vix.
Wow, that's not very convenient, is it? I mean, it's, it's understandable, but boy, that's a little risky having a guest across.
I agree, yeah.
The guest park at the bowling alley?
Yeah, they say.
What's the name of that complex now?
They have visitors spending, they'll say, park over there and then they'll walk over to that.
Wow.
Rebuilding.
Just stop at the sandbar and get a drink anyway.
That, that's what I was thinking too.
The bowling alleys where I see they don't have, they're always packed. That bowling alley, the parking lot is, I mean, bowling.
Yoga life.
What, what is the name of that apartment complex right now?
Isn't it Crestview?
I need one.
Crestview?
Who, Crestview? That's the.
I don't have it, let me see if there's a computer on and I can print out that, I know we did last time, we can Google it.
I just think that would be a good kind of litmus test to.
Yeah.
Reach more towards reality.
Yeah.
And what's the question?
How their, uh. You know, what, how many units that complex has, how many parking spaces it has? And if the city surveyed, the, the amount of parking being utilized.
So your question is, how much parking do we need for multifamily?
Yeah, right, right, we're, we're proposing the one and a quarter or considering one and a quarter.
With the exception of downtown.
The exception of downtown, just kind of, sir, how? How successful are those numbers compared to real life at the apartment complex? I think that might be our best indicator of reality.
Yeah, so I mean, like I said, last month, we did go through that and determined that that number was adequate. I keep needed to go to, um, Brownview so I can tell them.
All right, we'll come, multifamily, we're.
Yeah, that's.
Star by, did you have anything other than?
No. No.
Would you have some?
Uh. Packet page sixty-two.
They specified?
Yep, the finished party. That was easier for me to digest than.
Yeah, it is easier for me too.
Oh, there's million layers.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Under food and drink service establishments.
Yep.
I think I understand the intent, but I don't understand the words.
So what I think that means, and I think I might be guilty of bringing that up, like when you have outdoor patio space. And you have all this additional outdoor seating, but you don't require any parking for it.
Correct.
So now a lot of municipalities have started including outdoor entertainment.
But what does that require, what does that require?
So it says one space for each one hundred square feet plus fifty percent of required parking for designated outdoor food and drink seating areas, so.
Are we taking the square footage of the seating area and?
Yes, I would take that.
Yeah.
Applying what factor to it?
So it sounds like.
One space for every hundred square feet?
So it sounds like fifty percent more, so one space for every two hundred square.
Fifty percent more of what?
So I would read that to me, one space for every two hundred square feet, that's how I would read it, for fifty percent more. So if you take the outdoor, that's how I would read that, if you take the outdoor concrete area. And you add fifty, you know.
Like what?
So if you take an outdoor.
I didn't hear what you said.
So like what, like as an example, like an outdoor inter, like when they put the tables out or Silver Harbor or something like that, if you take that out.
Yeah, you're talking like two, two, one?
Uh, two.
In the street, is that what you're talking about?
That's two, two, one.
I guess they do that too, yeah, so.
Silver Harbor doesn't do that anymore.
Any of those, but, but I know like the Silver Harbor, I think, used to put something way out in the, they had an outdoor area. So you take the square footage of that and then if it's fifty percent more, if it was one per one hundred, whatever that square footage is, you do one per two hundred, that's how I read that?
That's just not clear to me.
Okay.
All right, so that need, yeah.
Yeah, that could use a little.
I actually didn't read that the way the both of you.
Okay, so maybe we're both wrong.
No, you're probably right, but that needs to be cleaned, that does need to be cleaned up then.
So Kristen, we have a question, Mr. Albert, Albert, uh, nevermind.
Oh, my goodness.
Whoever he is, he is what?
What's his name?
Packet page sixty-two.
Sorry, you're talking along.
Yes.
Food and drink service establishment.
Yeah.
I think I understand the intent, but I don't understand the words. So fifty percent of required parking for designated outdoor food and drink seating areas, based on what?
My, I thought was, my intent was, it would just be for the seating area, so let's say, you know, like if you go. I've been to somewhere, it's this big huge room, but there's only seats in one room or one. Or do you wanna do it just based on seats for outdoors? You know, cause some places they have the games and they have all that.
Yeah, I just, so what, what is your intent there, that that's?
What are you trying to?
Is it one space for every two hundred square feet of outdoor seating area?
It would be fifty percent, so let's say if.
Of, of what?
Of the seating, outdoor seating area, be half of that, you wouldn't want the full amount, cause it's only used part of the year.
But I, I still, I mean, it's extremely hard to understand what that says.
I think it just needs different words.
It just needs to be, the language needs, what you, what you're specifically wanting to do.
Whether I feel like we need to add additional parking for seasonal seating, I'm not there yet, but. If we are gonna have it, then we gotta have it so that we understand what's being applied.
So you're saying if it's an outdoor square footage, let's say it's five hundred square feet, you're saying only fifty percent of that five hundred should count for the number of parking spaces, two fifty. See, I read it the opposite way. I thought that, I read it to mean that if you have five hundred square feet. And the other is one per one hundred, this would be one for two hundred square feet. I read it.
Math works the same.
So it is not clear, so I didn't understand it the same way that you did and.
Yeah, okay.
We, yeah, we need clarification on that.
So how do you, do you have any thoughts on that?
Well.
I mean, if, if it, that's the intent, then I think it's. One spot for two hundred spaces of outdoor seating area.
Two hundred spaces or?
Or two hundred square feet of outdoor.
Yeah.
If that's the direction we wanna go, I think it needs to be very clear, if that, if we're gonna do it, it has to be.
Clear on how we're gonna measure, I agree with that.
I'm not good at math, but. I'm just gonna give you an example, like if you have a tabletop, a round tabletop, forty-eight inch diameter, that seats four people. So, and then you take, so let's just say, let's just say the square is approximately six by six or six by seven.
Well, I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel, we've already established that it's one per.
Yeah, so I'm trying to figure out what that does in terms of, I'm thinking of four people sitting at a table.
Why isn't it one?
Well, I mean, it's the same with indoor, I mean, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, we've already decided what indoor is.
Sure, okay.
Why, why isn't it just the same?
I mean, outdoor could just be the same, but to Kristen's point, we're only using it three months out of the year.
She's saying that also that out, on an outdoor.
Plus, you're gonna have to pay for that parking, so.
On the outdoor.
I'm not gonna.
The outdoor, you know, they might have those, uh, cornhole games and other junk out there that. Pick on cables and all the other stuff in the same square footage, so you go one for two hundred square feet. You'll work on that a little.
So on the same page, I had a similar question at the bottom on lodging accommodations.
Eight.
Sixty-two.
Two.
That I think is a little clearer, at, at least in my head. That you need to provide fifty percent of whatever is required for the accessory uses.
Okay, is this supposed to be? Would this apply to the lake house? No, because the outside accessory use doesn't apply to the motel, it applies to the restaurant.
Correct.
Okay.
So this would apply and take it, well, that's in the downtown district.
The Inn at Harbor Shores, cause they have, uh, they have a restaurant at the Inn at Harbor Shores, so you'd have.
So they've gotta provide whatever is required for the lodging portion. And then fifty percent of the requirement for the. Restaurant.
You'd assume some are.
And then somebody's gonna blur their eyes and say they have meeting rooms, now all of a sudden they're an auditorium. Which I still object to how it gets interpreted, that we're taking our uses and breaking them down inside of one use.
Yeah. So, so you're assuming that fifty percent of the people staying there might. Stay there and eat and fifty percent more might be coming from somewhere else.
I mean, it gives them a break.
Would this apply, for example, to the Old Holiday Inn if that had a fully functional restaurant?
No, cause it's located in downtown district.
Oh, that's right, it's, example please of what this would apply to?
It would apply to like the Inn at Harbor Shores, because they have a restaurant, so.
But, oh, okay.
Because let's say if you had all the rooms booked and I'm going there and I'm not staying there, I need a place to park my car to go eat my lunch.
Or the bar, outdoor park.
But I don't, most places, one three's going to rent to provide all of the parking.
The parking requirement though, for the restaurant would be governed by the section of the ordinance applying to restaurants. So we'd still be looking at a square foot, okay.
But they don't have to provide fifty percent.
Correct.
I, I think that makes sense, because again, the whole point is, if you look at that lot, how often is that lot over there really built? Very rarely. Very rarely.
It picks up in the summer.
It does, but it's still never really.
Take it in the weekends.
So.
Yeah, I agree.
Unless they have something.
That's all I know.
Yes.
All right, then back to Mr. Miller, thank you for getting us this. I was thinking, what, Westview is what I've.
Lakeview.
Westview.
No, Lake Crest, Lake Shore, Lake Crest Cleveland, those are on Cleveland.
Westview is one, west side road by the train tracks.
Yeah, that's the, so it's.
Kind of down in a hill.
It's Lake Crest Cleveland.
No, that's on Cleveland.
Is that the one you're talking about down the street from the bowling alley?
You're talking the one caddy car from the bowling alley.
Yeah, that's.
Correct.
The ones that got built in about nineteen sixty-nine, nineteen seventy by.
Okay, I thought you're talking about the one down the street.
No, no, the one right on the curve, right across from the sandbar, that's the one you're talking about, right?
Correct.
I thought that was Westview, but.
Yeah, you're right, it is.
Maybe it's, maybe it's lookout point, I don't know, but that's the one I'm thinking of, a big complex.
Yeah, it's got three different building unit addresses here.
Yeah. It says it has a hundred seventy-six provided. Well, units, one hundred and thirty-six units.
Page two, um, page thirty-one of that, and my first second page. There's a hundred and thirty-six growing units and they have a hundred and seventy-six parking spaces. And at the highest amount, when it was counted, there was a hundred and sixty-four cars in that park.
Yep, and then if you go to the bottom chart, one point two-five would require one seventh. Right?
Correct.
Okay.
Right. That helps. Does that get you what you were looking for?
That gets me, that does give me the information that I'm looking for. It, it leads me to the comment that I would keep the same requirement downtown as well. I would keep the one and a quarter, I don't, I don't understand why it would. I don't feel that downtown would be any different in the amount of parking that would be needed.
I think there's concern that that's one reason why it's limiting people to build more residential sound, new construction. Cause there's different rules for every model and mobility. For new construction, the cost associated with building surface parking or, in this case, it'd be both parking or blow grade parking. Is quite a lot. And going down the one and I could have printed out the sheet that was before this that compared to other communities. You know, some don't require any parking, um, some are, because there's, they just rely on what's available, um. I think it just, I, one seems more appropriate right now. Um, and people would.
Are you, are you, are you speaking to the short-term, long-term approach?
No, the short-term rental one.
No, no, I didn't say short-term rental, I said short-term, long-term approach. Right now, I suspect the Downtown Development Association Authority, whatever their name is and others, or would be very much opposed to anything more than one.
I think they would like it decreased and I'd say there's probably some that think there should be none, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, nine months out of the year, there's a sea of asphalt there.
And that group came before us, remember? It's like that they rent parking spaces and no one uses them, so they don't need any, what we were told. Right?
Well, I'm, it's just to Mr. Miller's point of why do something possibly, I must say, I agree or disagree. I, I had some issues with that, but we'll, again, we don't have a lot of data yet. But that would be the reason to do something possibly different with the downtown visa, be the rest of the, rest of the city. That's what they would like. What else do you need from us?
Whatever you, I mean, I've worked on a couple pages we talked about and.
Is this ready without the input, the others, I mean, the only thing I feel badly about, we don't have a full, full commission here, uh, with input, but by the same token, we're trying. Move, move this along.
I, I'm ready to publish for a legal vote, I, I have a legal notice, scared, ready to send this paper to the law department.
Are you comfortable doing that without that issue?
And we can that resolve.
Okay, but to the sad, I understand you're gonna have something to propose, it doesn't necessarily mean that it's gonna meet with approval. So I'm just saying that we can manage all of that and still do that publication schedule?
Mm-hmm, cause the public hearing notice just calls out article eighteen and then the, the three, the sections that we're looking at changing. You know, it doesn't really give a lot of detail, you know, it talks about section eighteen, two point six. And then eighteen point two, point seven and table eighteen one, you know, like looking to. Consolidate and change. So I, I think in order to do that at the next meeting, um, we're gonna have to all be on board with when you do the. Deep dive into the First Church of God, if we decide that it's one per.
We'll have to, we'll have to vote on it next time.
Yeah, so, so you'll need to do that still, that research and decide, and then. We've all kind of said we like the idea of it being consistent, one per whatever, so if.
Or have a valid rationale to not be consistent and, and example, yeah, that's all we're saying.
That's, yeah, and then the only other thing I think is just the clarification on the inner, the outdoor versus.
Yeah, right, that, that works for everybody, I think we're good with that now. What else, uh, do we have, uh, with regard to any other public comments or business to bring before us today, uh, Kristen?
Um, so Monday night, because of different timing things, the mechanical equipment recommendation you guys made back February, went to the city commission last night, or Monday night. Um. They directed staff to allow non-deforming mechanical equipment to remain in the front yards. So Lori and I are gonna work on, um, some language to add in there, they did that, dropped it back to the planning. So we'll do that. And then they'll be able to look at the amendment, but it's for non-deformable, it's not for new construction, it's non-deformable.
Was that the only other request to change?
That was the only thing.
That's a big one, though.
I, I explained the rationale and.
So that's not coming back to us?
No, it's not coming back to you.
What's, what are we looking at for our May meeting?
You have one signed request. One day was the deadline for, at the yacht club for a while, I did sign greater than three weeks.
That's going to be on May?
Yeah, May first.
Along with the parking?
Parking.
That will be a public hearing?
Correct.
Right? Anything else anticipated?
And then I'll, I'll work and see how much we can get done on the, um. Daycare stuff that we talked about last.
All right. Any other questions or comments for Kristen or?
I have a comment.
Yes.
This parking thing, I know, I mean, it was a huge amount of work, so appreciate all the, everyone that was involved in getting all that information because. You know, we would be guessing without the accurate comes and goes, so it's very much appreciated all that you guys do.
Indeed.
Uh, I'm sorry, I comment if there's a yacht club application. If, uh, if members of the yacht club would be reason to recuse that.
Check with Laurie.
Please check with Laurie because.
We might have a quorum.
We might have at least three people, four, I think.
There could be three or possibly four.
No?
No.
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 But I know Mr. Miller.
Tony is.
And Tony, if, if Mr. Eric is, Mr. Rice is, we got three, and I don't know about.
Or is, are you aboard or anything? Is Tony on the board?
Tony's on the board.
So we have at least one person on the board and two members?
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk to Laurie.
So let, let me be Laurie so that if, if it's a problem, that we know ahead of time.
Probably is a recusal, um, for, for them.
Certainly for Tony for the, being on the board.
Is that on the May meeting?
Oh, he won't be here that day.
I will not be here that day.
Okay, well, all right. Now, now I'm the problem. Again.
That's right. No, just, just go then, just give counsel, we will, we should have a quorum, it shouldn't be an issue, as long as I don't know about Pam. And Mike and if either of them are members, but.
I don't think so.
The only other thing I'd like to maybe suggest is next year that we maybe keep the April meeting at the normally scheduled time because it didn't seem to be beneficial to move it a week later.
I, I, I had a personal issue.
Oh, you did?
I was out in, I was in Florida.
Okay.
For a family wedding that was pre-arranged six months before.
I didn't think it was because of you. I thought it was because of spring break, so.
That's the only reason why it was.
Okay, I thought we moved it because of spring break.
So did I.
I don't have anyone, I don't have an assistant to back me up.
No, so that, that's a different reason, but I thought it was moved for spring break and it didn't seem like having it this week, we almost didn't have it a week or so.
All right, anything else? If not, ladies and gentlemen, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Do I have support for that motion?
Support.
Thank you, Ms. Rice. Uh, is there a discussion on the motion? All those, uh, favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I hold the same sign. Meeting is adjourned. We will see you on May, whatever that day is in May. Is it the first? May first, maybe?
It is May first.